Well, thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight to hear a little bit more about the disaster recovery funds coming to the state, $67.8 million. I'm Nate Formulari. I'm the deputy commissioner for the Department of Housing and Community Development. Within our department sits the Vermont Community Development Program, which is the, they administer the regular CDBG funds that come to us annually. So when HUD gets disaster recovery, it also funnels through this same team. So thanks again for coming out and for being online. I wanted to just start to kind of table set on why we're here. We had some outreach to some of our team members from folks in the community that you've had nothing to react to, to come to a public hearing and react to. And there's a reason for that. As this has come about, administration change happened as well, so at the federal level. So there was a bunch of webinars set up, a bunch of technical assistance set up that all kind of got canceled. And we were trying to navigate it on our own. Just last week, we got HUD, actually for a good chunk of time, it was like a nine to two, where we could work through with them, ask them questions. They were very attentive during that time. But as we did that, we said, maybe on this action plan, let's not post it yet. We got some new intel, but rather, let's wait, let's post in early April now that we have this new guidance. But we already had this scheduled, and we didn't want to cancel because we have learned some things and we want to share some things with you. So that's why there hasn't been a plan to react to yet. And we do hope to have something April 1st. And then there'll be another public comment period of 30 days, and we plan to host another meeting where you guys can react to the more detailed action plan that we'll be posting. So tonight, it's just a slideshow to let you know where we're at, what we're thinking. None of the numbers you see are final. None of the towns you see listed are final. It's just where, the direction that we're headed. And in some ways, this is a good opportunity for you guys to weigh in even before we post anything that HUD will have their eyes on. Let me make sure I'm hitting all my points here. The team will talk more about, so a couple of disclaimers. At this point, or in late December, we were hopeful that maybe we'd be seeing $300 million from the federal government in a variety of different programs. That hasn't come to pass exactly, but this $67.8 million has come to pass. So that's what we're dealing with for the full state recovery. And HUD is pretty prescriptive. The team's going to get into where they've kind of boxed us in and how we can spend this money. But I just want to make clear that there is not enough money here to solve all of the problems we face and all the, any one town could soak up this money with all the projects and issues you're trying to fix, the mitigation measures you're trying to take. So my encouragement to you, as you hear about what we're thinking, is to start prioritizing in your heads, what is the number one? What is number two? We're going to have to prioritize, we're going to ask for priorities from you, and then we're going to have to prioritize at the state level through the chief recovery office. We're working with, we're plugged into VEM. This is a full state government effort. This isn't just the people you see here making decisions. This is getting run through the whole enterprise to make sure things are working together. The team will talk about timeline, but I just want to set the expectation that, given, you know, HUD has to approve our plan, then there's grant agreements, blah, 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 back and forth, we're looking at probably the late fall before there's kind of final decisions and the ability to start getting money to you folks. So this isn't going to happen tomorrow, it's not going to happen this summer in terms of actually getting the money to you. It's a process to work with the feds. We also are, you know, aware that it's a volatile situation, so we're trying to stay in the box, not stick our neck out, and then risk losing any of this. So these are just things I want you to keep in mind as you hear what the team's going to lay out for you tonight. And we're happy, we're going to do some slides, and then we're happy to talk to you. We might, we might not have all the answers to your questions, but we'll take them, we'll take them in, we'll consider it for the action plan, and then once that posts, again, another public period where you'll be able to comment again. I'll leave it there and turn it over to this lovely team.
Well, thank you, Nate, for that great introduction. Ann Kroll, myself, Patrick Sheld, and colleague Julia Cannell will be taking some parking lot notes over there as they come up. We are part of a small team at the Vermont Community Development Program that is tasked with administering the regular CDBG, Community Development Block Grants that we get on an annual basis from HUD, and then the disaster recovery, the CDBG DR, as it gets allocated following presidentially declared disasters. And we have a couple definitions, we'll get into those in just a sec. The quick, I guess, agenda for today, just want to do some introduction, opening remarks, which Deputy Commissioner Formulari, I think, pretty much set us off already. We'll do a little bit of an introduction to Community Development Block Grant with some definitions of what it is and how HUD puts it forward, and then kind of give you the bones, I guess, of where we're trying to build our action plan from with the data points that we have and the unmet need requests that we've been fielding as they've been coming into our office and trying to fit them within that, as Nate appropriately said, the box, which is the HUD's Community Development Eligibility Box. As long as we can keep things within that box, we have some flexibility in use of the funds, but it's setting it up appropriately through the action plan so that HUD doesn't really have any questions coming back to us and we can operate the way in which we're putting it forward. And then we'll take public comments, discussions, questions at the end. We appreciate if you could just kind of save your questions until the end, till we kind of get through. We only have about 14 slides that we're going to go through, and then we'll kind of open it up for discussion. So as I just introduced ourselves, Deputy Commissioner Formulari, Ann Kroll, our Director of Federal Programs, myself, Patrick Sheld, with the Vermont Community Development Program. So HUD defines Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Funds. They're allocated for activities related to disaster relief, long-term recovery, restoration of infrastructure and housing, economic utilization. What HUD also does when they do these allocations is they take the FEMA data that was collected post-disaster, and they try and make their allocations based on that FEMA data, and they identify most impacted and distressed areas. And as you'll see later on a couple of the slides, how the money is kind of split out, but they require that we spend at least 80% of that allocation that they've provided to us in what they've considered to be HUD's identified mid-areas, mid-being the most impacted and distressed. And just a quick point I wanted to kind of make here, too, as you know, well, as we'll get into, these funds were allocated as a result of disaster 4720, which was the flooding events that occurred in July of 2023. It's now March 2025. These funds that HUD provides aren't typically for immediate emergency relief, they're more about the long-term recovery and resiliency and mitigation post-disaster, which is why the funds kind of come allocated from Congress and the feds about a year and a half after these disasters take place. Just a little visual representation of how the flow of funds kind of work. The state of Vermont, the Agency of Commerce and Community Development, ACCD, which the Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, is a department of the agency. The agency is HUD's grantee, the state of Vermont and the Agency of Commerce. We get our grant agreement from HUD, it flows into our offices at ACCD. We then provide state grant awards, which then flow out to the municipalities. So you can kind of see a little bit of a flow chart there as to how the funds kind of flow in and they work. As Nate alluded to, here's kind of a rough timeline of where we're at in the process. As Nate said, we're hoping to get that draft action plan published April 1st. If not then, it's going to be very soon thereafter, early April, to give you guys more substance to kind of see how this plan is getting laid out. Hoping to hold then that second public hearing, tentatively in mid-April. I think best-case scenario, when we publish the draft action plan, is when we'll also publish the 15-day notice for the next public hearing. As you know, with Vermont state law, you have to have that 15-day notice period before we can hold a formal public hearing. So that's kind of the, about that timeline, just kind of give you that idea as to between the next public hearing that we're hoping to hold, along with the draft, the publishing of the draft action plan. And then, once that 30-day public comment period is up, we are then allowed to submit our action plan to HUD. That is a HUD directive that comes in statute directly from the feds that we have to give the public at least those 30 days to comment on the published action plan before we can submit to HUD. So that submission to HUD will probably come sometime in mid-May. HUD then has 45 days essentially to take action, to approve. Any inaction, it's an automatic approval, but HUD usually doesn't take inaction, they will maybe take action on the 44th or 45th day itself, but that's kind of the timeline that statute has set out for HUD in their response to us. Following the action plan, upon approval, we're then tasked with uploading all this information and creating the programs within HUD's online management system. And then, once that occurs, usually about a 30-day period, I think they give us to complete that task, then HUD will issue the grant agreement to us, essentially. Once we receive that grant agreement, which by this timeline, probably late July, August 1st, then we have access to the funds. At that point, we are going to be opening up our Vermont VCDPs, Vermont Community Development Programs, online grants management system, and begin accepting applications at that point in time. With a first round of decisions, first round of grant agreements, funding decisions, hopefully as Nate mentioned, sometime mid-fall, late September, October, is when those funding decisions, after consideration of those applications, those grant agreements would then go out, with the hope then that by December, we can actually see some of the money going out the door, as you guys are incurring costs. Once, you know, that application comes into us and we kind of green light, there is a little bit of environmental review process and all this that goes on, but also, those are reimbursable costs. So once we get that green light from HUD, we will give you guys that green light based on the prioritization and conversations we've had around the projects that we'll be inviting for that first round. And then, of course, any remaining funds after that first round would go into, you know, probably an open competition as to what is left available and what's eligible based on what we're still seeing. We do have a pretty tight timeline to not just obligate these funds, but expend them, and this comes straight from Congress, US Congress, that we have six years from the time that we sign the grant agreement with HUD. So by the timeline I just put out, I think August 1st, 2025, we would then have until August 1st, 2031, to not just obligate the funds, but expend them all.
Have projects completed.
Yeah, and have, which basically means projects completed. So once we get rolling with this and we sign the grant agreement with HUD, we're going to be looking to move as quick as we can, because we don't want any balance of funds come October 1st, 2031, at which point HUD will just turn the faucet off and deobligate from what is remaining in their system, even if we have grant agreements and active projects that haven't yet expended. But that's a problem we'll start addressing five years from now. Hopefully, we won't even get close to that being an issue, but I just wanted to kind of preface that a little bit as well. All right, so now we're going to transition a little bit into the actual, where we've been with the funds and how we're anticipating, based on our conversations with our different stakeholders from different municipalities, with conversations with the regional development corporations, the local RDCs, the local regional planning commissions, RPCs, as well as the Central Recovery Office and Vermont Emergency Management, how we've kind of, in close communication with Central Recovery Office and the governor's office, how we anticipate splitting out the funds into the different activities that are allowable within HUD's DR program. We received an allocation of, as Nate said, $67,845,000. There comes with it a mitigation set aside where we are required to spend a minimum of 15% of our allocation, $10 million, on mitigation activities. The conversation we had with HUD around some of this really set itself, the way they kind of presented it was, you're going to have no problem reaching that 15%, because a lot of the activities that we're going to be involved in, whether it's infrastructure with water sewer or floodplain restoration under infrastructure or build out of culverts or bridge replacement, all of that, including replacement housing, rehabilitation of rental housing, and relocation housing as well for those owner-occupied units that may have been bought out and need a new replacement home or what. All of that kind of, there are elements of all of those that count towards the mitigation set aside. So based on activities we've set up, I mean, we've done some quick math a few different times, and we're kind of anticipating that we're going to be close to 50, if not 60% of that mitigation is going to be accounted for in some of the other activities. And I'll be, I'll have more to say on what we can do with that set aside in just a little bit as well. So as I mentioned earlier, HUD, when the, when the allocation came to us of the $67.8 million, HUD, what came with it were these HUD identified mid-areas, now that's the, I don't have in front of me now, the most impacted and distressed areas. HUD identified, based on the FEMA data, that all of Washington County and just the town of Johnson in Lemoyle County count as the HUD mid-areas. And so as a result, we're required to spend $54.2 million of our allocation in those specific areas. What they also allow within that is states to identify up to 20% of the allocation, which is that remainder, the 13.5, and we can identify our own most impacted and distressed areas. And based on our conversations thus far with the different stakeholders that I mentioned, these are some of the towns and projects and priorities that have kind of continued to bubble to the surface. And these are some of the potential grantee identified mid-areas that we might be moving forward with.
And emphasize potential. So don't get excited that maybe your town's not on there, and you're also looking, it's only $13 million, but, you know, we're just trying our level best to look at with what data we have thus far.
And just a visual representation thus far of what, of the conversations and the potential mid-areas that we've kind of come up with. The HUD identified is highlighted in red, and the grant, the potential grantee ones are highlighted in blue. I kind of like the visual representation because it helps to kind of compartmentalize some of the areas that are being incorporated. You can see that they're kind of clustered, they're kind of in, in lines with each other, which would be the watershed, which would be the river corridors that flooded. So that's kind of where we're trying to concentrate as best we can, based on the conversations that we're having.
Well, and emphasize, I believe, our justification back to HUD. Also, if, as we go outside of what HUD has identified as the mid-areas, looking at the watershed areas, I think it will help visualize in that respect.
So here's a, and then we have a breakdown of each individual or the housing, infrastructure and mitigation set aside activities after this, but here's a kind of a breakdown of the $67 million and how we're anticipating breaking it out between the allowable, as HUD calls them, programs or activities within it. We're anticipating about $2 million available for planning, $32 million for housing, $25 million for infrastructure projects, and that remainder of about $5 million for the set aside, we left in there with its own program activity, and we'll get into potentially a little bit more detail, but what's important, I guess, now to understand a little bit, is that mitigation set aside, that 15% that we are allowed to use, is the only activity that doesn't require a direct tieback to the disaster 4720 as it's been, as the funds, as we need to use them. So we'll get into, I think, a little bit more detail as we get to that, and certainly happy to answer some questions, because it is a bit confusing, and that's, it's taken a handful of back and forth, and we still have some questions out there to HUD that we're waiting for answers on, as to what potential uses could be there. So the housing program, the housing allocation that we're looking at, 32.5, to be used for the reconstruction, rehabilitation of new affordable rental and homeownership units, we've been hearing from some of our nonprofit housing developers, some of their multifamily units are in need of some desperate repairs. They've also identified a couple of projects that would count as housing relocation as well, so we could stand up some new construction of some multifamily apartments as well. National objective piece down there at the bottom, so HUD requires that with every project that goes out the door, whether it's regular CDBG, CDBG DR, we need to fit them within a national objective, and this is part of that box that Nate kind of alluded to as The low moderate income is for income levels that are at or below 80% median income, and HUD uses county statistics, so it would be of the county income data. And we need to ensure, actually with the DR funds, that in aggregate, out of all projects that we fund with the $67 million, that at a minimum, 70% of those funds are going towards the direct benefit of low moderate income individuals. The urgent need national objective, now I know what you're all thinking, that this was a disaster and everything is an urgent need, that's not exactly how HUD defines their urgent need category. What an urgent need category would basically allow us to do is waive the low moderate income national objective for that singular project, but it does count, it would count against that 70% aggregate of all projects meeting the LMI national objective. So it's a, it's going to be a balancing act as to how do we utilize that in order to fit projects, priority projects into the box that we need them to be within so that we can move forward with the projects.
Can I add for one thing here?
Yeah.
On all these buckets, one of the reasons we decided, like, let's rethink after talking to HUD, whatever goes in the action plan, that's it. And if we don't do what we say, we have to amend it, and that is like months away. So we were starting to go down the road of, we'll do this much for homeownership, we'll do this much for rental, we'll do this much for rehab, into these different buckets. HUD said, you might want to keep it general. So that's why you're seeing these kind of huge buckets, I just wanted to.
Good point.
We are thinking about all of the different things, and we will look at the projects that come in, but that's kind of one of the reasons why we said, wait a minute, we don't want to get locked into something that's going to require amendments later on, especially given the state affairs of Washington. We're just trying to keep it, get this through, and then we'll work on the different categories.
Right. Yeah, thank you for that.
That applies to infrastructure, too.
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a perfect disclaimer.
As we go through these, yes, for sure. Thanks, Nate.
Infrastructure, what we're looking at and what we've been hearing are projects to support community resilience, as well as water sewer infrastructure to support new housing construction, and we can do both with these funds. In terms of community resilience, think of like bridge, culvert improvements or replacement water sewer infrastructure to benefit the entire community, road rebuilding.
He's saying books on like, lost sound.
Lost what?
Sounds.
Lost sound? Can you not, can you hear me now if I hold the microphone closer?
How about this one? This one says it's a red light.
Yeah, they both have a red light going. I don't know. The Lost Out Orca guy. Apologize for that, we'll.
Can you unmute this?
Oh, that's going to take a couple seconds. All right, if I unmute my computer for those online, does that create any feedback?
Oh, shoot ya.
Okay, they're saying we're good. All right, well, we'll jump back in, and I'll just try to ignore my echo.
It's going to make it terrible for the audience here.
Oh, Julia, I might need you again. Have we do this before? I present a view. All right. We'll jump back to where we were. Thank you for that, for those online.
Are they able to hear?
I think so, and the microphone's through my computer now.
Oh, okay.
So where we're with infrastructure projects, yeah, I mean, we've been hearing both that there are obviously bridge and culverts that are going to need replacements, floodplain restoration projects, riverbank stabilization, I think, would fall in here as well, and then, of course, water sewer to support new housing projects as well, which, which we've been hearing a lot about to support the construction. Can't build housing without water and sewer, so these funds could be used to set up some of that new housing that's going to be built. And then the fun one, CD, the mitigation set aside. So what's really interesting about this is that the, while we're required to do it, and as, you know, as you could kind of see from some of the project examples, and as you're kind of thinking them through, between housing and infrastructure, there are going to be mitigation efforts that go into some of those. Like with housing, you could think about lifting a home above the floodplain, or moving the electrical components, or the water heater or whatnot, above the floodplain. That all counts as mitigation, and what we'll do within our applications will be requesting folks to identify what those costs are so that we can then pull them out, and we can start calculating what mitigation dollars are being spent per project to start counting towards our required 15%. But what's really interesting about this mitigation set aside is that they also state within the regs, the regulations, that it's the only pot of funds that don't need a direct tieback to the disaster. So, you know, an example that, one example that I keep jumping around in is thinking about like floodplain management or restoration, that in doing so, maybe at the headwaters or the top of the river corridor, that on a plot of land that maybe wasn't necessarily impacted by the 2023 flooding event, but by doing mitigation work on that site, we're going to be setting ourselves up for future resiliency against future disasters. And so, being that the property wasn't impacted by the 2023, there is no tieback to that property to the disaster, but we can utilize some of these mitigation funds and tag it as such, and say, this is a straight mitigation project that's, doesn't need the tieback, but it's going to have direct impact on our future resiliency. And we thought it was important to kind of leave a little bit of pot of funds identified for a project like that if one starts to come up, as we hear and continue our conversations throughout.
I was just, sorry.
Yeah, no, no, go ahead.
Well, this is, this is not fine. This, I think this is one of the bigger decisions we face, because we could roll that up, and we know we can hit the mitigation percent through the other project buckets. So we're trying to debate, is there a pocket of work that we're going to dedicate a separate bucket for? So it's an open conversation at this point for you guys. I just want you to know that. We haven't decided that we're doing this.
Well, and that would allow us the flexibility.
And it gives us flexibility.
Right.
And we understand, I mean, all of these buckets are not big enough.
That is true, yeah.
Like, if you go back to the main chart, two $10 million grants, and that's, that's it on infrastructure. So that's what I was kind of saying at the beginning of the meeting, we're trying to figure out how to make this work best, given the limited actual dollars we have.
Yeah, we don't have enough, but we're trying to stretch it.
Trying to stretch it, and trying to figure out what those priority projects are that are going to have the largest impact that we can use for these funds as well, and try and make whole projects and not smaller awards that, for lack of a better phrase, are just small Band-Aids moving forward, but if we can allocate for two, three, four, five big impact projects, that's one direction that we're kind of thinking in the use of these funds.
I just saw a comment in the chat, I just want to address, from Chris Campini, about all the hazard mitigation projects at VEM. We are very plugged into them.
Yes.
I believe there's over $400 million that have come in, and some of them not full allocations, so we are working with them to figure out where does it work for them versus us, and how that's all going to interplay. It's still very much up in the air, but.
I don't know whether it's going to work.
Sorry, I'm just.
No, it's okay.
I don't mean to run my mouth, but just, we are plugged in on the mitigation program and projects. There's $400 million there of ask and need, there isn't any of that money available. So again, this is another thing we're trying to balance and figure out how all these things can work together. But thank you, Chris, for reminding us of all those projects that are already identified.
We can keep that, because we're putting our sound. We didn't keep that because we're putting our sound.
Yeah. That kind of brings it to the end of our little presentation and where our thoughts are at this point for the use of the action plan, for the buckets that we've been kind of putting forward based on the discussions we've been having. And yes, we're working very closely with Vermont Emergency Management and their large list of priority projects that they've already plugged into their system and they're keeping an eye on. And would our funds have the ability to complete the funding stack on some of those priority projects that they've identified? And be able to push the needle a little bit and get some of those projects rolling?
So with that, we would open it up for questions, comments? Yes. And if you would identify yourself so we would know.
Sorry, one second.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Online's still having trouble hearing.
Oh dear.
That is back now.
Sound's back, okay.
All right, the sound is back?
Yeah. So we would, we could know who you're, what community you're from?
My name is Alyssa and I live in Barre City. Would you like to know anything else?
As much as you'd like to share, but that's helpful for context.
No, that's fine. And what's your question or comment?
I have a couple of questions first. Is this being reported?
Yes.
Okay, and it will be published?
Yes.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. So the 400 million that you referenced for the applications for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, are those applicants from 4720 alone or any subsequent disasters as well?
They're probably 23 and 24.
Combined, I would think.
So also to take into consideration that there will be another round of funding that will come out for 4810 for hazard mitigation?
That's right.
Yeah?
Yeah. We don't know what that number is. It's going to be a lot smaller than 23. But VEM is working with FEMA on a second round there.
Most likely, there won't be HUD disaster recovery funds.
4810?
Yeah, no.
Correct. As we currently understand it.
Yeah, we're very fortunate that we have what we got for 4720.
And so if we were to use some of the CDBG DR mitigation funding for those $400 million worth of applications and projects, would that be to, for the federal match that's required or to fully fund projects that are outstanding and prioritized?
That's up for discussion.
Yeah.
Because the FEMA money moves a little more slowly. And so we've been talking about, well, we're most likely, it's amazing, but we might have our money more quickly. And we could potentially go in there more quickly on some of those that more, the more pressing priority projects to make and fully fund those. But we're going to have to be very careful about that because there is, they are big ticket items. And we don't want to use our whole allocation for that. So it's a, it's going to be a very tight conversation.
Yeah, and just to comment on the federal match aspect, the CDBG DR funds are allowed to be used as the non-federal match for some of those FEMA projects. So FEMA will fund up to 75%. And then the DR funds can come in at the tail end and complete the funding stack for those already identified projects.
Yeah.
Can I ask a couple more questions?
Oh, sure, while you've got the floor.
Okay, I'll be fast. So the homes that are in a special flood hazard area and municipalities that participate in the National Flood Insurance Program are required to come into compliance with those regulations. And sometimes when they reach a certain point of damage or a certain point of improvement, they're required to mitigate and do certain activities such as allocate the structure or re-move or relocate it. And so is there any consideration for some of these fundings and mitigation funds to be allocated towards those properties that are required to come into compliance, not only for the property owner, but for the community as well?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, I would say yes.
Oh, yes. Yeah.
That's excellent.
Yeah.
I hope lots of questions about this.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, I'm Peter Wyatt from Montpelier. A rumor has it for it, the word is out that some of the projects in Montpelier already have funding. Do you guys know about like the dam by shaws and the agway flood mitigation up there? Do you know about that or do we just talk to our city?
I'm going to say we know about that. We've been told about that, but it doesn't have funding from us. I mean, no.
It doesn't have its own funding.
I mean. Yeah, I can speak to the Five Home Farming project, which is by Agway.
Yeah, go for it, Ben.
There's, there's been money allocated, awarded from Vermont Emergency Management to deconstruct the home on that site and do the pre-engineering, which is, I think, about 80% complete for a floodplain restoration. There's a second phase of the project that's been submitted, right? That's being submitted by the city. The implementation of that floodplain restoration project.
No funding for that. But that's a different bunch of money than that.
Different bunch of money.
Yeah, that would be different. And depending upon how that goes and how the conversation, like, it could be in consideration for the HUD funds if they move a little bit faster based on feedback they're getting from the applications as they're submitting them to those.
And if there's a gap, an unmet need?
We can certainly participate there too.
And the shaws, Dan, removal, anybody know about?
I don't think.
So I think that that is also one of the proposals.
Could you identify yourself?
John Copans from Montpelier. The Shaw's Dam Removal is another proposal put forward by the city of Montpelier for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. So it's one of, there was 400 million in applications as has already been referred to. So I think the city is still waiting to hear from Vermont Emergency Management about the status of that project similar to Five Home Farming.
Right, yeah. And I think, so to that, the hazard mitigation grants are through FEMA, just for clarity purposes. And I think part of our conversations that we'll be having with VEM is the status of those applications, the speed of those applications, and whether or not, depending upon the priority need of the project, would it make sense to pull the FEMA application and potentially, you know, do a little switch with the funds? Bait and switch with the funds, depending upon the feedback that FEMA is providing on the status of those applications and whether or not we need to get moving on those projects or can we wait?
Yes.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Karen Hatcher, Town of Plainfield. So 4720, Town of Plainfield had three houses in the buyout and about $300,000 worth of damage. 4810, whole other story, right?
Yep.
24 houses in the buyout and, you know, extensive, you know, probably somewhere between 25 and 35 million dollars in infrastructure damage. We know there's a lot of conversation about how to, how to help us, and we really appreciate that. But I guess my question is, I want to set my own expectations realistically, you know?
Sure.
Honestly, so should we be hoping for anything here? You know, it's kind of like, is it, will the allocations look more like, well, you only had this much for this disaster and so therefore you're getting, you'd be eligible for this little bit? Or is there more thought around the, really the impact of where the community is right now and what we've lost? And, and how we might use some of these funds to be able to build us, build ourselves back? So just want to put it out there.
Let me answer you the best I can right now. Is that we have the question out to HUD right now, even as we speak, about your community of the, how much damage was done there with your homes for 2024? And that's gone down to the Disaster Recovery Office in headquarters. And.
Headquarters being DC.
Yeah.
DC.
Yeah. And we just came back from DC. And they are, it's, so it's live on their radar. And I actually just, before we came here tonight, sent another message out to them and said, we're going to a public hearing tonight. I haven't heard from you.
Most Plainfield people are going to be there.
Yeah, they're going to wring my neck. So, yes, so trust me. We feel, honestly, I think in our agency, that we can make a nexus for, it's kind of a but for. I mean, all the, that happened there in 23 is, the but for that happened in 24 is a but for, because it just all kind of happened together. But, you know, I still feel like, because we put it out there and on their radar and they've said they're looking into it and they've gone to the headquarters of disaster recovery, I need to hear back from them, yea or nay, give us a green light. I feel, I feel pretty certain at the end of the day, they probably will. Again, then we're going to be, you know, in the same boat. We're not going to get more money, but we're going to be able to see what we can do for helping out maybe from an infrastructure standpoint, you know? So there's that. So, you know, stay tuned.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
And I'll just respond quickly too by saying, you know, we, the way we've always approached the regular CDBG program, as well as the DR program, is we don't make allocations based on municipalities or your size or we look at the projects as a whole as they're coming in. Because especially with something like this, and we look at Plainfield, for example, and if we took, you know, break out that 54 million and say, every town gets, you know, 100,000 or, you know, 500,000, like, that's not going to go too far in each community. So we're looking for those larger projects. And then the second quick point would be, you know, knowing the damage that's, that's been there and that largely was from 2024. If we don't get the answer we're looking for from HUD and we're going to, we're going to push them back based on what they respond with, that could be an option for that mitigation flexibility because it doesn't have that direct tieback. But we could still get involved in an infrastructure project that has a positive impact for the region, for the community, and tie it to that mitigation. And that's, that's why we're thinking about hanging on to that flexibility if we can.
Yeah.
Great. I just want to make note, we do have a couple of questions online. Let's, there is a couple of names.
So let's take some of those that are online.
Nicholas has been waiting.
Okay, sure, sorry.
Because I got a maze of heads between me.
Sure, sure, sure. Yeah.
First of all, thank you. This was a really.
Could you identify yourself, please?
Nicholas Charlie Castro, Berry City. Thank you for this. This was a great presentation. And just a couple of questions. Can you fully fund projects with CDBGDR or are there matches required for anything that's?
Yes, we can. We're, we can fully fund. We, we get the ability to kind of make those parameters ourselves. And for the DR funds, we have said no matches required.
Thank you. And I was going to say that, I know there's a big temptation to require matches because you can stretch it further, but just for a lot of communities, even Berry, cobbling together, the funding is hard, so.
Absolutely.
That's why we decided not to have a match.
Thank you so much. And I think this, this looked like it would be eligible, but are you, have you thought about non-FEMA buyouts? We're in the same boat, you know, Plainfield, we have a lot of buyouts too, a lot of them we're not proceeding with because of the non-development requirements. Can we do non-FEMA buyouts and redevelop with these funds? Or is it subject to the same rules as FEMA?
Well, it's subject to HUD rules around low moderate income, urgent need. But the conversations we're having around buyouts currently is with the Central Recovery Office and Vermont Emergency Management. And the feedback we're getting at this point is that our 67 million might be better utilized in other areas because the CRO and VEM seem to say that they have all that covered at the moment.
Well, but what do you mean by non-FEMA?
I'm thinking a non-FEMA buyout. So FEMA has the rule that if you do a FEMA buyout, you can never redevelop. And so we, in Berry City, we've been very hesitant for some buyouts because we don't want to give up those parcels forever.
Sure.
We'd like to redevelop them because those houses are not resilient anymore and rebuild a resilient house on those lots. And so our, the challenge is finding funding that can be used to acquire those sites, but also allows them to be redeveloped. So we're not, the buyouts that we've chosen to proceed with are fine. We're looking for funding to do a buyout that also allows us to rebuild on the lot. And I'm just curious if this.
Yeah, no, the DR funding would follow the same lines as the FEMA buyouts, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry. To burst your bubble.
We'll take one more and then we'll go online.
Yes.
Thanks. I'm Michelle Braun, which friends with the Winuski River. So we work with many towns throughout Washington County, including with Karen in Plainfield and with Berry City and with Waterbury and with Cavett and so forth. And what is, you know, I hear a little bit in Karen's question and in Nicholas's question, what's the best way for communities to interface with this funding? Like, are they, should they be preparing proposals that they bring to you? Will you have outreach to communities? Like, how do they get started with you in figuring out what projects they have that are good, that are a good fit for this funding? And what, you know, Northfield contacted me and said, what could we do?
Are you working with VEM?
We have a bunch of, we have, we have projects going to VEM. But in terms of this funding, how, what's the interface between DCCD and?
I'm going to say Vermont Emergency Management is, with us, is going to be that interface, for the first interface.
Okay.
And that's where we're going to have to stick with. So I'm going to say your best bet is to work with, whatever projects you're working with, would be to work with Vermont Emergency Management, especially with river work.
Well, for us, yes, but in terms of like the housing and other types of, and infrastructure, how do they start that conversation? Where does that begin?
Pick up the phone and talk to us.
Yeah, I'd say reach out directly to us. We'll probably also direct them to, depending upon the project, to work with VEM as well and get it on their priority list because we're going to be working closely with Central Recovery Office and Vermont Emergency Management as they help in collaboration for the prioritization of these projects. So I think.
But I mean, as far as housing, though, would be our staff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just add, have your projects talk to your municipalities too, that whatever municipality project's located in, have those projects be talking to the municipality because ultimately the municipality will have to be the applicant too.
Right, but I'm yet again not talking about our projects.
Trust me on our behalf.
But I'm actually not that far from the municipalities who have said to us that they don't know where to start.
Where, yeah, just give us a call.
Yeah, I'd say, yeah, give us a call, shoot us an email and we'll start the conversation and we'll definitely log that we've had that conversation. We'll add it to our project list. We'll cross-reference with.
Alyssa, if you don't mind, let us take our online questions first.
Yeah, can I just be added to the queue?
Sure.
Just a couple of quick questions online. Can CDBGDR still be used as non-federal match?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. For the housing allocation, what if the housing project is in the floodplain, but flood-proofed, raised, et cetera?
Who?
It's a good one.
Well, we would have to look at that carefully.
Okay.
Yeah.
London Dairy in Jamaica were initially under consideration for inclusion in Wyndham County. Are they no longer included because of HUD direction?
No.
No.
I mean, we'll continue to look at that water shed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then last one for right now. Is there any funding to provide municipalities with direct technical assistance similar to what's being done through the Rivers Program in support of HMGP applications?
Need to write HMGP applications? Is that what you mean?
RPCs are helping.
Them write, yeah, yeah. The RPCs are helping them.
But we are not contemplating using any of this funding for that purpose at this time.
No.
Noted now and something we can think about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, John Copans from the Northern Commission for Recovery and Resilience. I think we won't become more flood resilient as a state on a town-by-town basis. We really need to think regionally about how we approach this. And it feels to me like this funding source hopefully enables some regional approach and some economies of scale. And I'll mention a couple of things that I would hope could be incorporated. One is a really robust model of how the river works from its source on down to Lake Shuna Plain. The Winuski watershed, we are suffering from, at every sort of phase of that river. And each town has to make informed decisions about where they should be prioritizing their HMGP applications. And when we talk about investing, thinking about the 400 million in applications, we should be making really smart decisions about where those dollars go. And it seems to me that a more robust model that's going to serve Plainfield, going to serve Cavett, going to serve Berry and serve Montpelier would really be a wise investment that helps us think regionally and not just town by town. Another category where we see some opportunity is so many of our downtown cores are vulnerable to flooding, as we know. So many of those historic buildings in those downtown cores are privately owned. They're not eligible for a lot of programs. Those owners need some guidance on, on how to make those buildings more flood resilient. We feel like there is a real opportunity to, and to achieve some economy of scale, hire a firm to do work on those buildings, to make recommendations for what kind of improvements we'll make. Hire a firm to do work on those buildings to make recommendations for what kind of improvements will make those buildings more resilient. If we're gonna thrive as a downtown and we're flood vuln- flood vulnerable, we have to make those investments in making those buildings more resilient. And so where there is flexibility to apply these funds for those kind of projects that have some regional benefit, we would encourage to, to think about that.
I'll respond to that quickly, thank you, great stuff, and we are thinking about that. And we recognize what, what you're saying, we know there's a lot of work going on in the Winuski Watershed. The RPC up in La Moyle just got an IDA grant to start doing that. And we are contemplating a proposal to, how can we layer more on top of that? To look at these watersheds and create a model that then could then spread to other watersheds in the state. So it's, it's in our process, we did have two million in there for planning, I know that's, there's just, we're, we're trying to balance, because there's also, if there's another flood, there's already nowhere for anyone to go. So we're really, we have to prioritize getting new housing online as well. So we're trying to balance all that out, but I appreciate the comment and we are thinking in that way.
Yeah, Alyssa was, I think, right here.
Yeah, Alyssa, we'll go back to you, yeah.
Thank you. Okay. So some of our most vulnerable and impacted communities are in municipalities that participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. Ninety percent of the state, that's a rough estimate. Ninety percent of the state, state municipalities do participate in the National Flood Insurance Program in some way. Some adhere to these higher standards, including some of our most vulnerable and impacted cities such as Berry City. And so that means a lot, I'm learning. As I, as I said before, when houses in these vulnerable and impacted communities are damaged and then damaged again and they might have a low assessed value or even if they don't, that adds up quickly. And once they pass that fifty percent substantial damage or substantial improvement threshold, they are required by the National Flood Insurance Program regulations to elevate, to mitigate. Okay. I am seeing in these communities an unmet need to actually do that, knowing that we have a very small hazard mitigation grant program budget that could support those projects. So what I'm seeing is that many of these houses that are impacted and are required to come into compliance, not only to be eligible for individual assistance, not only to have a mortgage in a special flood hazard area, but also to, for the municipality to be eligible for public assistance and other federal support. And for the entire community to be eligible for reduced costs for this, that flood insurance that is required. What I'm seeing is that homeowners are put in a tough position. Once they realize, if they do realize, and it will come out at some point, that they are out of compliance and are required to either elevate the entire building above that face flood elevation or remove or relocate. And so I see an opportunity for this mitigation funding to support those projects where many cities are already thinking, we wanna get rid of those buildings, we want to build something else instead. That's part of the mitigation, right? That's part of the removal or relocation or renovation. So to answer Nicholas's question earlier, although it sounds like, no, we couldn't, we couldn't buy out these properties and then redevelop, is also an opportunity for those houses to be brought into compliance in some creative way, right? Using these mitigation funds to identify those areas that are already out of compliance and to address the issue that the homeowner could really benefit from support from. Right now, what I'm seeing is that there's, there's consequences, there's a lot of consequences if, if we're not in compliance for the individual and for the community. And I, I would like to see an opportunity for some incentive or some support or resources to go to those communities so that they can be in compliance for their individual and collective wellbeing and opportunities.
Thank you. Yeah.
The gentleman over here.
Thank you, I'm Carl Etterner, I'm wearing a couple of hats today and both of them I wanna support the proposals that John Copans laid out from the Montpelier Commission on Recovery and Resilience. First hat is, I serve Hunger Mountain Co-op as president of the board, the council there. It's a thirty million dollar annual business with ten thousand members and nearly two hundred employees right on the bank of the Winuski River here in Montpelier. Twenty twenty-three in July, the floodwaters were on our property. Fortunately, they did not get into the building, but it was very close. And we would be very well served by assistance in making an assessment of our infrastructure and what we could do for, what would be most cost-effective to make us more resilient in the face of a higher flood than what we had in twenty twenty-three. And we could also use the hydrological model to understand, you know, how likely we were to have higher floodwaters than in twenty twenty-three so that we can be assessing the priority of that investment versus other investments. The other hat I'm wearing tonight is, as a member of the select board in East Montpelier. We have not discussed this as a select board explicitly, but I've been on the board since twenty eleven. I have some, some sense of where the town is on these issues. We have voted to do strategic retreat where necessary from infrastructure that keeps getting wiped out by floods. And the hydrologic model in particular would help us to understand where to retreat from most, most quickly strategically.
Thank you.
This actually ties in, so Karen Hatch, your Plainfield, so one of the grants that we're pursuing is an advanced assistance grant that would provide funding for a study of the Great Rock, top to bottom. We just completed that application. And that, I think, is one way that we, and, and I believe that we'll, if that information can be shared, we can share it, I mean, that, why, why would we not share it? But we're gonna be using that information to help us make informed choices about how we might build back Brook Road or not, or what we do along the Great Rock in terms of the future of that, that part of our town. So, but that is a grant that we pursued and I think that starts, and the, and the technology is there to be able to plug in variables to be able to look at, if we get this much water in this much time, what happens? And to model that all the way down. So, you know, that, that is something that we're pursuing, so just sharing that information.
Thank you, yeah.
Hi, Dan Jones from Montpelier, this is, this is a quick query. It seems to be the state and the city of Montpelier share a floodplain between the Capitol complex and the downtown business district. Is there any way that the, the state could help take the lead, working with the city, to figure out a larger system whereby the buildings can be and could be, shall we say, retrofitted to be more flood secure within that plain?
I don't, I don't have a full answer for you there, other than to say, buildings and general services in FEMA are deep in conversation about the complex and the money's available to do some of that work. But I would need to follow up more specifically.
Yeah.
We would need some other people to comment.
Okay, it's just, it, it seems like there would be common interest for including the downtown business district because it's a, a critical part of the lifestyle of the workers in the state.
Yeah. A good comment, for sure. Something we'll, we'll look into.
Go ahead. Hi everyone, Lauren Hurrell, and thank you so much for having us. I'm mostly tonight wearing my Montpelier Commission on Recovery and Resilience hat. I'm also the executive director of the Montana Natural Resources Council. And just really wanted to echo the recommendations that John laid out, just add a couple more comments to them. You know, I, I think we're seeing real time as we're doing some of the VEM studies and others that we're learning and being surprised sometimes by the results of what we thought were gonna be really impactful projects and they're not. So just that upfront work, and we're always gonna have limited resources. So just those investments so that we're being smart and strategic and thoughtful in the modeling. We've also been talking about investing in the, some regional convening entity or supporting that, providing funding, like what could be a very modest amount for like this kind of money could go away. I remember vividly, right after the twenty-three floods, doing a Plainfield-based public forum through BNRC. And like there, everyone was like, who's bringing this together? And it was people from all over the region and there was, like, there's no entity that owns that. And there still really isn't, and people are trying to build that. But some support from the state and some funding so they can actually make that happen would be great. And just one other thought on the kind of adaptive downtown and building idea. Like, I could see, for example, that this kind of limited funds, you could invest and pick maybe a couple of communities that have different types of buildings, but then you could build kind of a toolkit that other buildings could use around the state. So ideally, you're creating a resource that's useful for every community. So I think, you know, you could think about it strategically, like what kinds of buildings are we doing so that it's useful what more broadly than what this small investment might be able to do. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, Ben Doyle, we got a couple of hats too. I'm the executive director of the Preservation Trust, I'm on the Montpelier Commission and a city council member here in Montpelier. I just really wanna echo the idea of, you know, the city was able to hire M&amp;S associates or, you know, Bob Stevens come in and do an assessment of city hall, right, about how to floodproof it, but the private business owners don't have that opportunity. We had a hundred buildings in our downtown that were impacted. They need help understanding the technologies that are available to them and the techniques that can protect their buildings to the best of their ability. And I think what we really need to do with this kind of funding is catalyze additional investment. And building owners who understand and have a roadmap of what they can do to protect the building the best they can, they can access things like the downtown tax credit program that has money for flood mitigation in it, right? So how are we really thinking comprehensively about the tools that the state has and using things to catalyze? So I just really wanna emphasize, and as Lauren said, it's not just something that could be done, you know, for Montpelier and Berry, that, that toolkit and the resources that are developed and doing that kind of comprehensive work could be helping London Dairy too.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm Nathan Suter, Montpelier, I'm also a member of the Montpelier Commission for Recovery and Resilience. And my home is, according to the old existing FEMA maps, eighteen inches above, above flood. I'm not sure those maps are current anymore. So just piggybacking on the adaptive downtown, the idea of studying, at least in Montpelier and Berry, perhaps more extensively, what can be done to mitigate or, or be prepared for the next flood in these, these, these centers of our communities and centers of our local economy that really can't just be picked up and moved. So that's one piece, I think that these are the beating heart of our communities and are critical that way. But then many of those buildings, the hundred buildings, you know, in, in Montpelier that we're talking about, are housing, right? And I just remember thinking over and over again, in twenty twenty-three, thank goodness this did not happen in November because of the time it took to get heating systems back online. You know, I, I know property owners who were, it was November. So months later, you know, desperately trying to get contractors to get things installed. And so, you know, you're, you've identified very clearly the housing's priority, both, both finding a pathway and infrastructure for new housing. But I also think perhaps the cheapest way is also make the housing we've got as resilient as possible. Even if folks have to move out for, you know, a couple of weeks, things clean up, can they come back? And so my analogy is often an energy audit, right? Most homeowners don't know the best ways to make their home more efficient. Many building owners don't know the best ways to make their, their building more resilient or, or more quickly recoverable after a flood. And so if the relatively, I mean, I think the figure we're looking at for Montpelier to do this for a hundred buildings is six hundred thousand dollars. Which, you know, sounds like a lot, but actually, if you split it up, it's not that much. And if that small piece enables a building owner over time as, oh, this heating system is failing, you know, upgrade it or I need to change something about the facade. If they don't have that information in hand, the chances of them making, you know, a certain medium decision as opposed to the best decision, we want them to make the best decision. And so I think it's a, it's a lever, you know, this, this lever could really, over the course of ten years, change the way our communities are prepared for the next flood.
Thank you.
I wanna do a quick pause to ask, go ahead, chat questions again.
Sure.
First question is, where are you getting your updates regarding the funding stability?
Probably the.
Which, which funding source?
I get down on my knees every night. No, I'm gonna say, I think we're in pretty good stead. I will.
These DR funds have been escrowed by Congress, so.
Yeah, so, yeah.
The twelve billion that was set aside as part of this overall is, the DR funds have been set aside and they exist. So as soon as we get to our action plan, we will have a grand agreement with HUD.
Yeah.
We will have to, I don't wanna start a whole thing here, but, the bad words, can we just call them the bad words? Asheville, North Carolina had their whole plan rejected because of a few bad words. So we, we do need to be cognizant of,
We've already been.
how, we're, we know the bad words, but I just wanna let you guys know that. Those are the, the bigger trips that we're seeing, maybe than, than the rest of the fund.
We've already been canceled from our TA provider, right?
Yes, 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 so anyways.
Yeah.
Next question, isn't VEM working on a basin-wide modeling application with HMGP currently? Can you confer or comment on the status of this?
Can you say that again, I'm sorry?
Isn't VEM working on a basin-wide modeling application with HMGP currently?
I believe so, and my understanding is that's the River Initiative that is out there, that's working. I believe it's funded with HMGP grants and VEM. Is it a different, am I thinking? It's a different?
We're in the River Program.
Oh, okay.
I don't believe that is the case, but I'm, I'm not a state worker, I'm not VEM.
Yeah, no, I mean, the little conversations I've had with the River Program folks is that they're, they're doing modeling on a, like a town by town, but it's also incorporating, I think, small.
Unlike a project, that project base is not just.
They're not doing basin-wide.
Just the capital area. No.
Not the whole river.
Okay.
No, not at all.
Okay.
Uh, okay, next question, or, go ahead.
So just on, I, I'm not sure the intent of that question, if, if the modeling that you folks are talking about on the watershed, if that would be duplicative. We don't necessarily feel it is, but we are trying to investigate who is doing watershed work.
Yeah.
And how could what we wanna add play with that and play nicely with that? Just in case the intent of that question was, why are we duplicating, so.
Well, but.
True, yeah, good point.
But, okay, wait a minute, David, just, she has one more in there.
I've got a couple more. Is there still a ten million dollar cap on awards? If so, please consider increasing this or waiving in minutes. That was early information.
That was early information that we had initially thought about, a ten million dollar cap on projects. We haven't solidified that, that's still up for discussion.
Yeah.
And then.
Just remind everyone of the amount of money we have. Ten million dollar cap is two infrastructure projects.
Right.
Go any higher than that?
Where, it's a really hard conversation, I, I,
It is.
I stress about it all the time, but, so yes, we are still trying to think about that, but the dollars are hard.
And then just going back to the water basin question, H and H modeling for the Winuski Basin, the intent of the modeling question was to find out if any regional modeling work is actually being pursued. It's not clear from the reports we're hearing.
Okay.
Just to follow up on that.
We'll have to follow.
Yeah, we'll, and, and as Nate said, we'll, we'll continue to have those conversations because one thing that we do certainly know is that we will get in a lot of trouble if we duplicate benefit. So if we fund something that is already underway in some fashion and it shows that two federal or just even one federal, one private resulted in the same project, we're gonna have to pay back our portion. So we, we will be engaging in those conversations to see where the duplication may occur.
David.
On that note, is where are those checks and balances? Because there, there are a lot of, there's a lot of projects happening that impact towns that we don't know, we don't know about the projects. So the organization, I think, needs to be, I think people need to come to the table.
Yeah.
RPCs need to come to the table, economic development associations need to come to the table because there are, there's a lot going on. And it's all good stuff, but there's people that are being left out of the conversation. And it's inefficient. David has some harder town handles.
Thank you, David.
Wearing that hat.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go in the back here, he's had a scan of a lot.
Steve Whitaker, Montpelier. Berry and Montpelier and Berlin have significant unhoused populations. Many of, I photographed quite a few tents that got washed out in twenty-three July. And those folks have not been addressed in any of the discussions that, and then housed people become unhoused people as a result of a flood. So how could we target some of these monies to kind of create both long-term and emergency expansion capacity, possibly up the Country Club Road? To both remedy the folks that got washed out in July, even though a lot has. washed out in July, even though a lot has changed since then, but build some dignified capacity for folks that are unhoused now and expansion capacity, well-prepped and well-stocked for the next ones? Is that a good use of this money?
Very fair comment, and something we should be considering.
Yeah.
Was there someone, sorry. Well, come back.
James Ray, I'm a Montpelier resident and also a member of the Montpelier Commission for Recovery and Resilience. I just wanted to put a finer point on one thing that was, that's been raised in a couple of, John, John mentioned it, Lauren mentioned, I want to put an even finer point on it, which is the idea, and it feeds to this gentleman's comment and a few things that have happened, is, is, is the, the opportunity to work watershed-wide with people. There was a meeting convened of representatives from towns and villages and municipalities all along the watershed, the shovels are part of that, and the energy in that room was palpable. There are people, like, in, in one evening, the discussions that were sparked, the ideas that were shared, the knowledge that was shared, I didn't know you were doing that, that kind of thing, right? Oh, you were working on that? Well, that's, like, the power behind that kind of convening, A, the desire to keep doing it is tremendous, and the power behind it, I believe, is trem, I think many would believe is tremendous. And so I want to, and I think, so I want to just put, help to elevate that idea as a, as a, where, and it wouldn't be a lot of the money for, I think, a tremendous amount of future benefit is to, to stand up this thing that gets these people talking on a continuous basis. And then the final thing is, I think all this ties into the question that I think one of you raised, that, that set aside, the 10%, we know we're going to meet the mitigation otherwise, but we're going to set this aside because it can help us address outside the, the containers at the headwaters?
Yes.
Yes, because that's, Montpelier, all of us, there was the funniest discussion in that meeting that night, where everyone looked at the poor guy in Washington and said, it's all coming from you. The town of 3,000, right? Like, our problems aren't coming from Montpelier, our problems are coming upstream, and same for all of us. And it's so interconnected, that there's got, that, that pot of money that can help us cross those boundaries at least a little bit is so powerful.
Share a hand up, then I'll pull group.
Yeah.
I'm Krista Maye B. from the town of Hardwick. I'm just going to reiterate what you just said, but then remind you that the oil watershed covers two RPCs, which makes it even more difficult conversation-wise.
Correct.
Actually, three RPCs, sorry. And the modeling grant that you're referring to, the DA, goes to the border of Hardwick because we asked it to. It stopped in the middle of Hardwick originally, and doesn't include the three towns above us that are our headwaters and are impacting the oil extensively and don't see themselves as part of the watershed because no one is reaching out to them. So the watershed issue is really big, and we have people in our community who are asking about projects that would benefit downstream, but we can't answer that because we're not in the same RPC. And we really would like to look at this as a watershed, not just regional, watershed, not just Winduski watershed, but the oil watershed is just as important for all those different reasons. I'm just going to reiterate it.
Yes.
I know you know this. I know you know this.
But now everyone does. I wasn't Johnson that day.
We were.
Carl Bisik, I'm with Plainfield Select Park, and I fully support the idea of a whole river. And I'm, I'm thinking about our town, we're planning to take out a dam, so how's that going to affect everyone downstream? It's really important, we look at all the communities along the river. And that was a great meeting we worked on, but I think that's a very good point.
Just, this triggered a thought for me, and do we want to maybe just touch on the idea of, as with regular CDPG, if a group of people came together and came through one municipality, but you represented
A consortium.
A consortium, and just find the right municipality to be the applicant.
Yep, yep.
That would apply in this situation.
Oh, sure.
So I just want to have people thinking about that. If we're, if, say we can't fund a group to, to come together, if you're having those conversations, do you have the right municipality to apply, but it benefits many? So just keep that in mind.
Are municipalities the only eligible entities? Yes.
Yes.
No.
Not with DR funds, no.
No.
Sorry. Sorry, Nick.
With the regular CDPG program, yes. With DR funds, they do allow us to do what are called state direct grants, where we don't necessarily have to go through a municipality. I would imagine a majority of our applications are going to go through municipalities, because that's the way our program is set up and the way we normally operate. But there is opportunity if the right entity steps forward with the right project, we could provide a state direct grant.
Yeah. We'll go back to you before your hand falls asleep.
I would just like to uplift Southeast Vermont, Windham and Winds are counties where there was a significant impact, but sometimes not significant enough to meet a threshold that made them eligible for individual assistance and thinking about private homeowners who have driveways and bridges and roads and culverts who maybe are still passable now and accessible for emergency services, but, you know, it's not an isolated event that only impacts it once with each rain. Property owners are watching their driveways or their bridges or culverts continue to wash out, not to a point where it's, it's an emergency yet, but they know it will be. And I think that, I love mitigation. I think that, you know, with mitigation funds, it was a really great opportunity to recognize that unmet number of people are falling through those cracks where they're not eligible for federal assistance to do that. There's not local resources or funding available to do anything just yet, but mitigating that, that risk before it actually occurs will be much more cost-effective, especially if managed through some sort of master contract, where we're seeing that there are these localized areas where we're seeing a lot of this impact. And so, you know, I think that it's been an incredible amount of support that has been offered to Central Vermont and Northeast Kingdom after these, these, these events, and also just want to remember that Southeast Vermont was also impacted, and we might not see the data all of the time, but it is there.
The West River.
And you can see it in the two loan reports, and you can also see it through the disaster case management program and the outreach that's been done there. So if more data is needed, I think it's available and could help provide a picture of the overall state's needs.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry, the sound is off again for the online folks.
Should be better, I'll mute it somehow.
Okay, thank you. Got it.
We have about five minutes left. Are there, is there any online questions? No? All right, so we'll go Bronwyn, and then over this gentleman, and close with Tom.
I'll be quick. My name is Bronwyn Cook. I'm a resident of Barry City. Full disclosure, I also work for DH City, but I am speaking on a personal level, although it's hard to disaggregate sometimes because this is just how I think. But I, I also just wanted to elevate the opportunity to leverage these funds to, to try and, try and do things differently. We talked about watershed-scale thinking, those kind of decisions, they, they take a long time, right? It's more communities that are involved, more people that are involved. I think the hardest time to make decisions to do something differently is when you are in the middle of recovering from a disaster. So recognizing that there's a lot of need out there, we are still recovering from the last disaster, but how can we really leverage the learning from the investment of these funds to help encourage other communities to start thinking about this ahead of time? Think about it before the next flood hits. Just as an anecdotal thing, you know, my parents, when they needed to replace their water heater, it was because their water heater went out. Did they think about a different kind of water heater? No, because their heat was out, right? So it's very difficult to make different kind of decisions when you are in the midst of just wanting to get back to normal, but if you're doing this planning ahead of time, you may be able to make a different decision when you are actually in that phase of recovery. So just advocating for trying to extract as much as we can out of these funds to help other folks learn how to make decisions differently, plan for them in advance of the next.
Thank you, Bronwyn.
Hi, Dan Jones from Montpelier again. This may sound like not a levity, it's not, there's a lot of research recently that is coming out in terms of the value of beavers in upper-level watersheds.
Oh, I've got a few for you, you can have mine.
Since she's offering you her, what's on her property?
Yes. Beaver's on her property.
Lots of flooding, lots of flooding. Thank you very much.
I don't have the watershed to support it. However, this would require some work, I guess, with forestry and agriculture to do something, but
Sure.
If you start looking into the research, the actual value of beavers in terms of making a sponge of the upper watersheds is amazing.
Thank you. Mayor?
Thank you. Just a follow-up comment. The gentleman from Washington at that meeting totally got it, and he wanted to help, so we'll be working with them. I just, first of all, I want to say thank you. This is hard work for you, and we know because we went listening to council and everyone else and everyone in this room were doing it too. You know, it's like an episode of The Bachelor, somebody's going home happy and two are going home crying, and we all know that.
I know, there's just never enough to go around.
But, you know, we know that, and, but thank you for the good work you're doing.
Well, thank you.
But, was, Alyssa, was it? You have, she had a question, and I wonder if you could just react to it, I'm not aware you did, about compliance with the, with the flood insurance program and whether some of those funds will be going towards elevating homes. Because as we're looking at projects in Barry, and I think as we all look at projects around our communities, we used to use the words "cost-effective" and "new construction" in the same sentence.
Sure.
We stopped doing that in '23, it's, you know, as it approaches $450 a square foot. But if we can elevate some homes in Barry, and for $150,000, say, a 1,500-square-foot home that is perfectly habitable, that's a cost-effect, cost-effective way to do things. So I wonder if you could just react to Alyssa's question about compliance and
Yeah, well, I think what she was talking about, though, was, well, maybe I'm, maybe you need to repeat that. I was thinking that maybe I was confusing what Nick was talking about was the buyouts and then replacing, but elevating a home with, that's going to stay within a floodplain? You're definitely going to have to elevate, seriously. And yes, I mean, it isn't the, the, something that HUD likes to do, I'm going to say that. But if the home is going to meet the standards that it's appraised at such a value that it's going to be, let's say, the sticks and bones of it are still good enough, like you're saying, that it would be worth doing that, absolutely, yes, we'd do that.
Great, thank you very much.
Yeah. Thus far, our conversations around housing have been with some larger developers and around buyouts with VEM and CRO. We haven't, I guess, gotten good data maybe on the
Individual.
On the individual unmet need there. So I don't know if the city of Barry is, if you guys are collecting data around some of that information?
Way too much, it's all good. We need, we'll, we'll absolutely be engaging with you.
Great.
So thank you.
Yeah, no, and we would, that's the kind of information we need, because I sort of looked at, you know, we didn't have this as a, we posted it or wanted to post this as a, a formal public hearing, but I looked at this more as a formal information gathering of unmet needs opportunity tonight, and that's really what we want to hear back from you all. So here we are, we're talking and getting, you know, lots of questions and comments from you, but now that you have, you know, faces to names and all of that and where we are, by all means, you should reach out to us and, you know, send us your information our way with what you have as unmet needs, because that's what we need to inform our action plan. And that's what we are here for tonight, really.
Absolutely. But just on a general multifamily and single-family owner-occupied are eligible activities for us to be engaged in.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, one last thing, over here.
Can you give that, Patrick?
Multifamily apartment buildings as well as single-family owner-occupied, both rental and owner-occupied, we have the ability to engage in both of those.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
And I'm assuming that the grant covers costs from research through permitting through the
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, oh, absolutely.
Yep, it covers soft costs and hard costs.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Is there one last question?
We'll see them one more, yeah, in the back. Next to Nicholas.
I think, yeah, I think Nicholas answered my question. I've heard everything about the buyouts and still unhoused and all the other big projects that need to be done, but I haven't heard if this is the resource for individual residents who have thousands of dollars worth of damage that was not taken care of by the municipal authorities for those people, you know? Is there money allocated for that?
Well, on an individual basis, generally, we look to have the local housing
Homeownership Center?
Yeah, Homeownership Center, sorry, thank you. Have the individuals go to the Homeownership Center and work through them to then work feedback to us. It would be overwhelming for us to have, you know, a bunch of individuals coming to us. So Downstreet Homeownership Center in Barry, for instance, if you work through them, you know, individuals will work through them and go to them, and then, you know, they have a Homeownership Center that works with individuals to say, here's what the unmet needs are, and then they would pull that and come to us.
Yeah.
But you're, you're looking a little disconcerted about.
It wasn't eligible through that at all.
Oh, because are you above income or?
Yes, because I have an apartment building, which is my, also my residence.
Well, yeah, we could talk on a specific case and then see, I mean, one of the challenges that all these grants and applications will face is that it is federal funding and for an individual, it usually, there's a lot of red tape and a lot of federal compliance. And so what we would want to try and do in that instance is maybe find a grouping of homeowners within a community and not work with one individual, but see if we can get a group together and make the money go a little bit further in that way, and then you, then we can kind of share in that compliance and regulation a little bit, so it doesn't fall on the head of just one individual homeowner.
Well, or are you talking just a duplex, for instance?
Army?
Are you talking just a duplex or?
No, no, it's three units.
Oh, okay.
It has combination, and
Okay.
Okay. I mean, be happy to engage in the conversation, see if we can't find, if it doesn't, through conversation, fit our program, help you try and find someplace that it might.
Yeah.
Which is also next to a culvert, with all the walls, you know.
Yeah, okay.
Reach out to your long-term recovery group.
Sorry?
Reach out to your long-term recovery group.
Yeah.
Yeah. Would she, would she know who that is?
Appreciate it. Thank you.